I'd like to call the Tuesday, June 2, 2020 Papillion City Council Meeting to order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the roll?
Sunday.
Here.
Mumgarth.
Here.
Gaines.
Here.
Glover. Jaworski.
Here.
Cluke.
Stube.
Here.
Ingberg.
Here.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. Do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the city council chambers and also online at www.papillion.org. Just before we start the regular agenda, I do just want to give some reminders again for the online meeting. Just a courtesy reminder that if you keep your microphones muted. And everybody will have an opportunity to speak if they are a proponent or opponent or a presenter on somebody. But until then, please keep the microphones muted so we have some control of the meeting. If you are somebody who has an item to share, those were to have been sent into City Hall by noon today. As we do not have screen sharing turned on, there have been examples around the nation where these public Zoom meetings have been hijacked, and it's been traced back to screen sharing. So we've got that turned off. So just a couple of courtesy things there. And I think with that, the only other reminder, it's not 100% true, but it's pretty close. If you see a white background with a city logo, that's generally a city staff person. And we've tried to put their position on there along with a name. So if you're curious about something, you've got a name to a face. And most of the council members have a blue background with a logo as well. So just sort of points of reference. With that, is Sarpy County Economic Development on? Okay. They are not here to present, but in the published packet was the Sarpy County Economic Development's first quarter update. So that is out there for the public in the council. If there's any questions, shoot those into us, and we'll get those answered. Next would be Administrator's Report. Ms. Powers.
Thank you, Mayor Black. Just a quick update on Project Willa. You may have noticed on tonight's agenda that the developers did request an indefinite pause on their project as they evaluate their options. And we are expecting to hear something from them in the next 90 days or so. And as a result, the third reading of the annexation of those parcels is also on a pause until we know more. Also, City Hall will be reopening to the public by appointment only, starting on June 15. Safety guidelines and social distancing will be maintained as the city starts to get back to somewhat normal operations. Many meetings will still be conducted by Zoom, though. The Recreation Department had their first farmer's market of the season last week. Traffic was light because customers had to preorder with the vendors. But tomorrow's another farmer's market, and instead this time, the first hour will be for those with preorders. The last two hours will be for people to walk through, so we're hoping a better show there. The Papillion Landing will be opening next Monday to members only with safety restrictions in place. And each separate portion of the landing will have a maximum occupancy of 10 members. And Sumter Amphitheater opened this week, and there's great news. It's booked almost every day for the month of June for dance recitals, so that's good to hear. The library's summer reading program kicked off this week. And for the first time ever, the entire program will be done virtually this year. And library staff got very creative on their programming. Thank you, Matt and his staff for that. Around 500 people have registered, which is a great turnout for the program. Also, the library, they did curbside pickup started last week, and it has been overall a success. And there's, on average, about 35 pickups per day with that program. And finally, the fire department will be conducting a couple of trainings this week. A house near 80th and Cape Heart will be tomorrow. And 524 North Jefferson near St. Columcille will be on Thursday. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Councilman Klug. Second by Councilman Jaworski. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday.
Yes.
Mumgarth.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yes.
Cluke.
Stube.
Yes.
Ingberg.
Yes.
Seven yeas, one nay.
Motion passes. Next is item D1, Ordinance 1886. An ordinance to amend Papillion Municipal Code, Chapter 104, entitled "Curfew" to provide for emergency declarations by the mayor and related rules, including curfew orders, and to designate that as an emergency ordinance and to take immediate effect. Is there a council member that will introduce?
Ingberg will introduce.
Introduced by Councilman Ingberg. I am and staff are requesting a waiver of the second and third readings, which does require a supermajority. Main reason for that, because we, other than bonds, we tend not to do waiver of second and thirds. So just a quick explanation. We do, the mayor does have the ability to declare states of emergency. We do them with snow, we do them with floods, we do them with pandemics. And when a state of emergency is declared, there are some powers that shift to the mayor that, so we can react immediately for a short period of time until the emergency is over. And there, when it comes to curfews, especially in relation of riots, there's not a lot of specificity as far as what the, what those powers are. And so we thought that's a, it's a pretty serious thing to be declaring a curfew related to that. And so what this ordinance does is add some more specificity on what are the conditions? When can you call it, and what are the ramifications, and what are the controls of that? And just because of the current environment and it being very fluid, we thought it'd be good to have that specificity. So that is the reason for requesting a waiver of a second and third. So with that, is there a motion to waive the second and third readings for ordinance 1886?
Klug will motion.
Motion by Klug.
Second by Gaines.
Second by Gaines. Are there any proponents on the motion to waive? Are there any opponents on the motion to waive? Any council discussion on the motion to waive?
Yes, Mayor, I have my, I have some thoughts. This is Councilman Mumgarth. I often vote to waive second and third meetings on bonds, et cetera. When I do that, whenever I waive second, third readings, I balance what I perceive to be the need for speed, the benefits from speed, and the negatives of eliminating an opportunity for the public to talk about things that influence, that impact them. I'm going to vote against waiving second reading on this. I might waive third reading if we have a public hearing, and nobody seems to care if we pass this. I can certainly see why there might be some beneficial need and beneficial use of this ordinance. But I think the current situation doesn't show us that we need to go that fast. I think there's sufficient authority in the mayor or somebody to do what we did last night. How that worked pretty well. Long and short of it is, this is an ordinance that affects the lives of people in Papillion. And I think we need to give those people a chance, whether they want to or not. We need to give them a chance to come in and say yes, no, otherwise, on this kind of an ordinance. So no, I'm not going to waive, vote to waive second and third, second and third readings. As I say, maybe at the end of the second reading, it'll be a different situation, but it isn't now. So no, I'm not going to vote to waive that.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other council discussion? Mr. Sunday?
Question for Mr. Thielen. Could you explain for us all the legality of what occurred last night? What legal authority the mayor relied upon last night? So that we have a more informed basis deciding whether we should vote on this new ordinance tonight or wait three weeks?
Mr. Thielen.
There's a statute in Chapter 81 of the state laws that deals with emergencies. And it gives the chief executive officer of a local government, namely the mayor, the power to declare emergencies. And it doesn't get into the specificity of issuing curfew rules. It's more of a, it was more germane probably to the coronavirus crisis that happened a couple of months ago. That, but that Chapter 81 in general was what we were relying on in drawing up the emergency declaration and the, what was really a temporary curfew rule of one day.
So are you saying that it's somewhat of a gray area as to whether the mayor has the authority currently to issue a curfew for adults?
Yes.
Okay. That, knowing that, I think I do support voting on this tonight. Seeing how communities across our country are under threat from anarchists who choose a spot at random, we don't know whether we're going to be a target or not. I want our mayor to have the power to-
Hey, look, the recreation director, she's waiting to-
I'm sorry if you're not participating in the meeting. Please be muted.
And I was going to add, Councilmember Sunday. If, if this ordinance isn't approved, the reason for waiving the second and third ordinance readings is to get it in effect this week, so that if it's in effect on Thursday, if by chance we need to do a curfew rule on Friday night, Saturday night, it would have more legal teeth. If we don't enact this ordinance this week, and it stretches off into a couple of weeks, yes, we could, could still do a curfew rule, but it's, as you describe, a gray area.
Right. And just for the record, I am not usually a fan of waiving these rules, but I think this is the circumstance where it is warranted. So I'll support waiving the rules tonight. Thank you. Any other council discussion?
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Stube.
Yeah, and I guess I just want to add one thing to that. I think Mr. Mumgarth makes a good point, but Mr. Sunday does also. And I think it's important to recognize is that it really gives the police chief and his staff the ability to, to act accordingly. And again, I'm not sure that we can wait three weeks if, if there's a continuation of concerns that have been raised in other communities that, that might end up filtering down into the Papillion area. So I also will plan on supporting this.
Thank you. Any other council discussion?
Yes, Mayor, this is Councilman Ingberg.
Yes, sir.
I will tell you too, as far as waiving, as a former police chief, I would certainly feel more comfortable knowing that if a curfew is issued, it has some legal merits, some legal teeth behind it. I'm sure our chief would do whatever is necessary in any case. But if I were to issue, my comfort level would be much better if we had a solid legal basis to do it.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? Be none. Please vote on the motion to waive second and third. This does require a supermajority.
Yes.
Mumgarth.
No.
Gaines.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yes.
Cluke.
Yes.
Stube.
Yes.
Ingberg.
Yes.
Six yeas, one nay. By Mumgarth.
Motion passes. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 1886? Motion by Councilman Sunday, second by-
Second by Jaworski.
Any other council discussion?
Yes, Mumgarth.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Okay. If we followed the usual procedure of having three meetings and three readings and letting the public know that this is happening, we are, by this ordinance, we are regulating the lives of the citizens of Papillion. So they have an interest in this. And if we were following the usual procedure, I would probably vote for it. I think there's good reason for it. I understand that the city attorney tells us that there's a gray area as to the enforceability of what happened last night. But I observed what happened last night, and I think it was very productive and successful. And there's a lot of gray areas in the legal world. And I am not going to vote to deprive, you know, vote for this and change the con, regulate the conduct of the citizens of Papillion, unless there's a clear need to do so. And in particular, unless we've got their views. So whether I, it's not that I don't support the authority of the mayor, the authority that's granted by this ordinance. I just cannot vote for this ordinance if it's going to go through this process.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? Mr. Sunday?
I don't see it as us voting to regulate the conduct of the citizens. I voted as giving the mayor the tools necessary, the legal tools necessary, to take what steps are necessary to protect our community and its citizens in an emergency situation. That's an entirely different kettle of fish than what Mr. Mumgarth is suggesting, that we're voting outright to deprive citizens. I don't believe that's true.
Well, let me clarify. Okay, if I can clarify. Let's don't kid ourselves. What this ordinance does is gives one person, the mayor of Papillion, the complete authority to compel everybody in Papillion to stay in their house. And any thought that when the eight members of the city council gives that one person that authority, we are not in some way regulating the behavior of those citizens of Papillion, I think is ignoring the obvious. So I stand on my position.
Just for public education, I do want to clarify that it doesn't necessarily give the mayor the authority to require people to stay in their houses. I know that was a general statement, but some would take that literally. More controlling public gathering spaces, public streets, public highways, and, and things like that. Maybe, and regulating some, maybe some businesses and, and some activities that might, might go on, but not necessarily literally to stay in your house, but I understand what you're saying. Any other council discussion?
Mayor, this is Councilman Gaines.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumgarth, in some aspects, I agree with what you're saying. And I also agree with what Councilman Sunday is saying, and I agree with the ordinance. And I feel like, just because on one specific night, we did not have an emergent need for this, it doesn't mean that it's not going to come this weekend. So what I would invite you to do is that if you want to come back sometime in the future, if this passes, and, and work with me or whichever other council members are interested in, and put together something that maybe we, we have more time to think about, or maybe fits in better, or even to bring this back up, to allow the public to come back in and voice their concerns, I would support that. But as of tonight, I am going to support this, because I do see that there's, in my opinion, a need for someone to be able to control our streets if necessary. But I just wanted to throw that out there, that I do understand your concerns, and I would be willing to discuss this with you in the future, so.
Mr. Mumgarth.
You know, Mr. Gaines, you're, you're 100% correct. And I have thought of that, that maybe there's no harm, no foul if we just simply pass this ordinance, and then two weeks from now, a month from now, come in and have an ordinance to repeal this ordinance, an effort to repeal it. And then go through the process of hearing the public's views on should we repeal that ordinance. We effectively would get to that same spot as if we don't waive the second and third readings. That's still a possibility. If this passes, I certainly may bring forward something to repeal this ordinance. I just don't think at this point it's necessary to go through all those machinations. We should just give the people an opportunity to speak now and put up with the current uncertainty in the law for another, another two or three weeks. That's it.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? Mr. Jaworski.
You know, we're elect, as elected officials, we are elected to make tough decisions. This is a tough decision. This isn't easy, but it's the right decision. We don't always waive the second and third hearings unless there's a need for it. And there is a need for this to be waived, to protect the city of Papillion and to protect the residents. So I'm going to support this 100%.
Any other council discussion? See none. Please vote.
Sunday.
Yes.
Mumgarth.
No.
Gaines.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yes.
Cluke.
Yes.
Stube.
Yes.
Ingberg.
Yes.
Six yeas, one nay by Mumgarth.
Motion passes. Next is item E1. E1 and F1 are related. E1, Ordinance 1879, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from RE Rural Residential Estates to LI PUD2 Limited Industrial Specific Planned Unit Development for Lot 1, and LI Limited Industrial for Lot 2, for the property legally described as attractive land located in the southwest corner of Section 25 Township 14 North Range 11 East of the 6 PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the northeast corner of Highway 370 and Highway 50. The applicant is Ryan Companies US Inc., Willa. The applicant has requested that this item be continued indefinitely. It's what Ms. Powers were referencing in the staff report. But we did publish for a public hearing, so I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing, call for any proponents and opponents that may want to be wanting to speak on it. And then what I'm going to do is ask for a motion to indefinitely continue the public hearing. So we'll keep it open. And then if in the next 90 days, when they're ready, then they come back, and it's, then we can move forward. So I will open the public hearing. Are there any proponents? Be none. Are there any opponents? Is there a motion to continue the public hearing for ordinance 1879 indefinitely? Motion by Councilman Jaworski. Second by Councilman Sunday. Do we have any proponents or opponents on the motion to continue? Any council discussion on the motion to continue? Please vote.
Sunday.
Yes.
Mumgarth.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yes.
Cluke.
Yes.
Stube.
Yes.
Ingberg.
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
Motion passes. Next is item E2, Ordinance 1884. An ordinance to rename Gianna Street as dedicated by the South Ridge Valley Final Platte to Matthews Drive. This is a public hearing. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Close the public hearing. Next is item F1. It's related to E1 continuance. Resolution R200084, a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a preliminary plat for the property legally described as attractive land located in the southwest corner, Section 25 Township 14 North Range 11 East of the 6 PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the northeast corner of Highway 370 and Highway 50. The applicant is Ryan Companies US Inc., Willa. And this is a public hearing. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Do we have a motion to continue the public hearing for Resolution R200084 indefinitely?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Sunday.
Second by Gaines.
Second by Councilman Gaines. Do we have any proponents or opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote on the motion to continue.
Sunday.
Yes.
Mumgarth.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yes.
Cluke.
Yes.
Stube.
Yes.
Ingberg.
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is item F2, Resolution R200093, a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a Class C liquor license for Caniglia's Amano LLC, doing business as Caniglia's Amano, 13178 Lincoln Road, Suite 101, Omaha, Nebraska 68138, and a manager application for Glenda G. Labens. This is a public hearing. I'll call for proponents. Is the applicant on? I see it. I can see you're trying, but the sound's not coming through. Check something on our end. Does show it's unmuted. Now you're muted. Now you're unmuted. Now your video went away. Now you're back. All right, we can't hear. I will note for the record that the applicant is here. Exchanged some messages with them on social media. I've been following that, I think. Go ahead and try.
Can you hear us?
There you go. Okay, go ahead. And using as an opportu, besides just introducing yourself, we've got a little bit of time. If you want to take a minute as a commercial and share a little bit about your business.
Hi, I'm Glenda Labens, and we are trying to get started here. Caniglia's Amano at the Bungalows by Prairie Queen there. It's a live workspace. It's going to be a pizza, pizza joint, mostly takeout and delivery at this point. It's a good thing, but that's what we are at this point. Starting is kind of scary for us with this COVID thing going on. But we talked with Jerry Reimers there at the Bungalows, and he thinks that with all the people coming into the area and all the people at the Bungalows, we can be pretty successful down there. Happy to keep the Caniglia's name alive in Omaha and Papillion, Sarpy County. So we're anxious to get going.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Oh, public hearing. I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R200093?
Ingberg. Motion approved.
Second by Councilman Ingberg. Do we have any council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday.
Yes.
Mumgarth.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yes.
Cluke.
Yes.
Stube.
Yes.
Ingberg.
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Welcome to Papillion, and we look forward to your opening. Thank you. Next is item F3, Resolution R200094, a resolution to approve the acquisition by condemnation, if necessary, of easements across certain private property for the Turkey Road to Summit Ridge Water Transmission Project. This was tabled from the May 19 meeting. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R200094? Motion by Councilman Jaworski.
Second by Councilman Gaines.
Second by Councilman Gaines. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday.
Yes.
Mumgarth.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yes.
Cluke.
Yes.
Stube.
Yes.
Ingberg.
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Item F4, Resolution R200056, a resolution to award the contract for Turkey Road to Summit Ridge Transmission Main to S.J. Lewis Construction in the amount of $3,255,845.95. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R200056? Motion by Councilman Klug. Second by Councilman Jaworski. Do we have any proponents? Opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday.
Yes.
Mumgarth.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yes.
Cluke.
Yes.
Stube.
Yes.
Ingberg.
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Item F5, Resolution R200097, a resolution to approve a request for a private water supply well permit for 5614 Highland Drive. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R200097?
Motion by Councilman Gaines.
Motion by Gaines.
Second by Mumgarth.
Second by Mumgarth. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday. Mumgarth.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yes.
Cluke.
Yes.
Stube.
Yes.
Ingberg.
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Item F6, Resolution R200098, a resolution to approve the Fourth Amendment to the Ashberry Farm Subdivision Agreements. Motion to approve Resolution R200098? Motion by Councilman Jaworski. Second by Councilman Klug. Do we have any proponents?
Yes. Randy Koushak with Lampar Neerson, here on behalf of the applicant, BHI Development, here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion or questions? Any council discussion or questions? Please vote.
Sunday?
Yes.
Mungard?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Clug?
Yes.
Stube?
Yes.
Ingberg?
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Item F7, Resolution R 200100, a resolution to approve policies for the limited reopening of city fields and properties for adult and/or youth sports and other recreational activities for the public. This is directly related to the Governor's Directive Health Measures for COVID-19 that came out effective June 1st. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R 200100?
Clug will introduce.
Motion by Clug? Second by Jaworski. Any council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday?
Yes.
Mungard?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Clug?
Yes.
Stube?
Yes.
Ingberg?
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Item F8, Ordinance 1883, an ordinance to amend Papillion Municipal Code 182 regarding contracts between the city of Papillion and nonprofit organizations. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 1883?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mungard?
Second by Ingberg.
Second by Ingberg. Any council discussion?
Yes, I've got a comment.
Yes, sir.
Those of you who've been around a long time may remember that this arrangement, the ordinance that's being amended here, was written by me. And it was written for a purpose and at a time, and that purpose and time is long gone. And the fact that it was written by me might be good enough for some people to amend it. But I will just say that the amendment here makes it so much better, and I support it as it's being written now. So I will vote for it.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday?
Yes.
Mungard?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Clug?
Yes.
Stube?
Yes.
Ingberg?
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
All the regular agenda items. Next is committee reports. I believe Public Safety Met. Is there a report from that?
Thank you, Mayor. This is Councilman Gaines. Back on the last council meeting on May 19th, we discussed adding some lighted speed limit signs or basically speed indicator signs. The city came back with some additional proposed signs, and I believe we approved six new locations, five heading southbound, and I believe three additional ones heading northbound. And those should be installed somewhere within, we should have them within six to eight weeks, depending on the COVID situation. It may take a little bit longer. But that is what we discussed tonight and approved those. And the staff is still working on the alley behind the, working on the food truck issue. And they should have an update still with that somewhere around 30 days or so. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. No other committees met. Do we have any comments from the floor?
Yes, sir.
Yes, if you could state your name for the record? Oh, I think it was just background noise. Okay. Any comments from council? Mr. Sunday?
Just to clarify for the public on that, on those speed limit signs, we're not changing the speed limits anywhere along Washington Street. We're merely making the signs more visible so people will respect the speed limits more as they enter downtown and the area of the middle school as well. We're putting new signs both to the south and to the north of the middle school to try to slow the traffic there as well.
Any other council comments?
Mayor, I have a question.
Mr. Stube.
Yeah, so I think it's probably been a couple of months ago now. We talked a little bit about the potential financial impact on the city of Papillion because of the pandemic. And I believe I remember reading something here recently with regard to sales tax revenue received. You could maybe give an update to us with regard to what we've seen so far and what kind of impact that's having on us.
Great question. Thank you for that prompt. So the pandemic, when did that hit? Middle of March, late March, I think, is when the pandemic hit. So for sales tax, the sales tax that we just received, that we received in May, that actually was for sales in March. We get our sales tax two months delayed. So March sales we receive in May. So the sales tax check we just received really did not have the COVID effect because most of that period was before COVID hit. So we didn't necessarily see a decline yet. It'll be this month's, June's receipts, which will have a full effect because that'll be April sales. So that one, we will see the full effect. And because we really have no insight at the state level, the state gives us zero rights to look at the sales tax reporting that comes from the retailer. It's a little bit of a guess for us to say, what do we think the impact's going to be? Now, there was a newspaper article that those May receipts were higher than normal. And what we believe that dynamic was, was a couple of things. Again, I think two and a half to three of the weeks did not have a COVID effect. So it was our normal higher sales. The week after the COVID effect, from everything we can glean, and we're seeing it in other cities, that was people stocking up. I mean, people were out really buying toilet paper and canned goods and everything else. And of course, we have a Sam's Club and some of the other places where they would go shopping. So we think a little bit of that initial pandemic actually was our increase in sales. And then businesses were also ramping up, trying to get their personal protection equipment, trying to get their sanitizers. And a lot of those were not using traditional supply houses. They were going to any place they could get and buy. And so, and then the other effect of that is Google and Facebook, at that point in time, were still in full board doing their projects. And some of those projects pay sales tax. And so that would have been an increase in there as well. Now, when it comes to the Google and Facebook, those fall under the Nebraska Advantage rebate programs. And so a lot of that will end up being rebated. And if you remember, a couple of years ago, we put in a fiscal policy where we reserve anomalies in our sales tax because that will eventually have to be rebated back. So a number of dynamics were going on in March that we think explain the higher sales. So some of it's going to be reserved for the rebate back that the state requires us to do. Some is the initial stocking up, and some is the normal sales. If the increase is related to the stocking up, that will offset a little bit of April sales, which will probably be down. And then hopefully, now we're coming back into normal a little bit. So I think it'll be mid to late June where I think we'll have a better sense on the fiscal impact. That answer it, Mr. Stube?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. We are fully anticipating there will be a negative impact. And so we're already doing some things from the budget perspective proactively in anticipation of that. But June will be the real telling.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Ingberg.
I just wanted to mention also that one thing that's reminding everybody, what thing is occurring now that may help offset some negative is the fact we're now collecting sales tax from online purchases as well. We weren't getting that before.
That is correct. And if people remember, we actually had a bond rating with the Moody's Rating Agency. And that was right after the pandemic. And probably nationwide, they were downgrading the credit quality of cities. And in our case, they actually held us even. And that was a major discussion that if there is a drop in sales tax, Nebraska Legislature just put in the online sales tax. If you're not going to the retailer, you're still buying, you're buying online. That probably was a neutralizing effect. So thank you for pointing that out. Any other council discussion? Couple of things from the last couple of weeks. The department heads continue daily meetings. Those will probably start slowing down. Those were all related to pandemic to make sure every day we were prepared and doing the right things. As that's kind of opening up a little bit, and the new directors are out from June. I think staff is going to start slowing those down and eventually get back to a regular weekly staff meeting. I don't think I attended one of those this week. I still attend and chair the multi-jurisdictional meeting for the Sarpy-Cass County Health Department. For the public that might not have heard, every day, Monday through Friday, we get a direct briefing from the executive director of the Sarpy-Cass Health Department. All five cities of Sarpy County plus Plattsmouth are on that call. That's the mayors, the fire chief, police chief, and city administrator. Then we also have the, from the county, we have the county administrator, the chairman of the county commissioners from Sarpy County. We have Sarpy County Emergency Management. We have the sheriff. We have county prosecutor. Then as you step up a level, we have Judge Cox, and we have Judge Freeman. So we have both district court and county court so they can have direct briefings. We then have a representative from Offutt, usually Colonel Dayton, who's over the 55th Mission Support Group. And then we go up to the federal level, and we have Mr. Mark Dryling, who is Don Bacon's Chief of Staff in DC. So we can get a direct update from the Health Department. We can talk at every jurisdictional level, whether it's city or county. We can get federal impacts, and we can update the base as well since they've got so many people in and out of the community. And I'll tell you, really, other than just increased testing, testing is going up. So when people look at the COVID, they will also see the COVID positives going up. It's always hard to interpret. But I think the good news is what they call the positivity rate, which is of those that are tested, how many are positive, that's going down, which is a good thing. About four to five weeks ago, that was in the 10% to 11% range in Sarpy and Cass County. The last three weeks, it's been about the 5% range, and it's been holding at that level. The interesting dynamic will probably be over the next two weeks. Just the natural occurrence of Memorial Day, people were getting together. So the social distancing was probably going away a little bit. Even without that, then just what's going on the last couple, three days with some of the social unrest and some of the protesting that's going on. Of course, social distancing is out the window. That will show its effect over the next two weeks, and the Health Department is watching that dynamic. So the public message is please continue social distancing. Please continue the sanitary practices. Please continue wearing the mask. If you're close to people for long periods of time, just the same message you've been hearing, probably now just as important. The conflicting messages, the governor did send out the Directive Health Measure for June, which actually now start loosening up. So there is some confusion in the public of messages. Positive rates could be going up. Keep practicing everything we're doing. But oh, by the way, let's loosen up at the same time. So some conflicts in there, and we've got to manage those, but they are both reality. So that's the daily meetings. If you have any questions related to COVID throughout the week, be sure to reach out to us. Then from a city side related to COVID, we are starting to slowly unwind, as Ms. Powers mentioned. And I think you've got updates on those. And I did send the council emails today with an actual copy of the Doug Governor's Directive Health Measures and those guidelines. So you can see those. If you don't see, have those. Let me know. I think they just went out about an hour before the council meetings when I sent them. So that was just more informational. We also had a United Cities call regarding the legislature, but not a lot going on there because they're not back in session yet. And then I still continue to sit in the weekly updates on the governor's call and the White House call. But nothing that you probably haven't gotten in the news and the general tone there. The only other things, the current governor's directive for virtual official government meetings, that directive expires at the end of June, so the next council meeting will still be Zoom. And unless he extends that, then the first meeting in July will be back in council chambers without Zoom unless the governor extends that. I think the only other thing I just want to say is a very public thank you to the Police Department. Over the last couple of days, been amazing at the professionalism of our department to absolutely support people in peaceful protest, First Amendment rights, at the same time not allowing violence and things like that in the community. So they've got a very hard job. Papillion's been very safe. Is that because they are very prepared, or it's not coming down here? I don't know the answer, but I'm very thankful for the Police Department and the professionalism that we have. And I've been able to witness the interagency cooperation between all of the police departments, all of the law enforcement in Sarpy County and even Douglas County, and how they can work and react. So Chief Lyons, a very public thank you to you and your staff. They got a tough job. I think with that, any other council comments? Do we have motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Clug, second by Councilman Jaworski. Please vote.
Sunday?
Yes.
Mungard?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Clug?
Yes.
Stube?
Yes.
Ingberg?
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
We are adjourned.